...of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on September 17th, 2018, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Moon, seconded by Mr. McElveen. All those in favor? And that is unanimous with all those present. We are missing Karen Keys-Gamarra, Elizabeth Schultz, Pat Hines, and Janie Strauss. And so that motion passes. We have a personnel matter, and I'm going to call on Mr. Moon for that motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the School Board appoint Helen A. Nixon as Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources effective October 1, 2018, and authorize the Chairman to execute a contract reflecting this section.
Second, and all those in favor? And that motion passes unanimously with Ms. Schultz, Ms. Hines, and Ms. Strauss away from the table. Oh, and Ms. Keys-Gamarra away from the table. Okay, so we would like to congratulate and welcome Dr. Nixon as the new Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources effective October 1. Dr. Nixon, we are going to, if you want to wave to everybody so they know who we -- and we will give you the opportunity to make remarks at the end of the month. Okay. Excellent. At the school board meeting at the end of the month. Okay, yes, you're allowed to speak prior to that. Thank you, I apologize.
[inaudible]
Yes, okay. So, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to get started with our work session today, and the work session will be led by Ms. Tammy Darrenack-Cofax with the assistance of Mr. Moon. I do want to apologize or send regards from Ms. Strauss, who had to be away for Family Matters.
Thank you. Mr. Moon will be, our first session will be review of our ERFC, our annual report, and a thank you to everyone who's up here. If you will take a moment, once you get settled, to please introduce yourselves as we begin our presentation.
Eli, just as you're getting ready to start, we hired Eli over a year ago. I'm so excited you're finally getting a chance to see an amazing leader in action. I've gotten to watch him go to some of the retreats. You're gonna love, I know you're only getting 30 minutes to hear everything, and there, so we may have to, you know, feel a little push, and we may have to invite you back, Eli, but we're just proud to have you as part of the Fairfax family, and I know the Board is gonna love to understand just the top-level things that have been going on in ERFC and answer your questions that they may have about your presentation, so.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Actually, I'll be managing this portion of the work session, and as stated by Dr. Braybrand, we have only 30 minutes. I know that's not much of a time, and I'm sure that both members, both members also do have some questions to ask. So if you could limit your presentation to hopefully 15 minutes, so that we can ask you some questions. You don't have to cover every single page. I have, you know, both members all have reviewed those slides, and many of those slides tend to have very technical information that might not require a lot of explanations. So with that, let me ask all those who will be participating in the presentation to introduce themselves first, and then we'll go from there.
Sure. So, again, because my mic wasn't on, my name is Eli Martinez. I'm the Executive Director and Chief Investment Officer here at ERFC. I'll let my team introduce themselves, starting with Jim.
Hello, my name is Jim Roner. I'm the Deputy Executive Director of ERFC.
I'm Lisa Scott, the Communication Specialist for ERFC.
And Michael Lunter, Finance Coordinator for ERFC.
Okay, so with that, I just want to take a second to thank Dr. Braybrand and the amazing leadership team here that you have here at FCPS. We're just honored to be working alongside them. I realize this is a tight schedule. We're gonna try to get you back on track here, and as you've already noticed, this is a very heavy deck, so I'm gonna be moving very, very fast. Just as a point of course here, we want to make sure that you understand what our agenda is for today. We'll walk you through the key points for the presentation. We'll talk about the member dynamics, we'll talk about the performance for the plan, and then we'll go into the costs, and then just wrap it up with our key strategic initiatives, if you can get around with that. We'll have some time for questions at the end. I want to remind the School Board that this is for information purposes only. There's not an action required from you at this point in time. So with that, let's just jump right in. Key points for this presentation, the only plan that is actively growing for ERFC is the Tier One, 2001 Tier Two Plan. We've got 1,700 members in that plan right now, and again, it's the only plan where new members are coming in, and it's the only plan that's open, very important. Secondly, we had a phenomenal year last year. We made 16% after fees. This was excellent, and it helped us really increase our funded ratio to 75.7% as of December 31st. Our expenses remained competitive versus our peers, and our four key strategic endeavors for the next three years include continuing to improve the sustainability of the plan, marketing, messaging, and education for the key stakeholders. We're gonna go through this member characteristics section very, very fast. I'm not gonna cover all the slides in the interest of time, but I would say that this entire section is as of December 31st, 2017. That's because that's our latest valuation time point. We want to make sure you have the most accurate and latest information available to you. So just jump right in. This is your membership by plan, starting with your legacy plan. Your legacy plan is your oldest plan that you have established at ERFC, started in 1973, went through 2001. As you can see, most of these plan members are retired. There's also the 2001 Tier One Plan. This plan is mainly active employees. This was opened in 2001, went through 2017. There's a small sliver of that population that's retired. We'll talk about those in later slides. And then the last plan that's been open, again, is the 2001 Tier Two Plan. This was opened by the School Board, implemented by the School Board last year. So it's your newest plan, only has 1,700 members. Keep in mind, these members were hired within the last year. Some of the things that you want to keep in mind, the key changes that the School Board adopted going from Tier One to Tier Two include reducing the interest crediting from 5% to 4%. You also changed the retirement eligibility from any age with 30 years of service to a rule of 90. We also changed the minimum retirement age from age 60 with five years of service to Social Security age with five years of service. We then also changed the final average salary from three to five years. And finally, we changed the COLIT from a fixed 3% to a CPIU-linked rate with a 4% cap. All that to say, if you take that all together, all that really means is that your plan became less expensive for you as a plan sponsor. It also became less generous for your employees as well, because employees have to really wait longer to retire, and when they do retire, they're gonna receive lower benefits than current, previously retiring employees. So let's look at, we'll just skip over this trends chart, really just saying that the Legacy Plan, Tier One Plan is in decline. That's sort of common sense. Let's really focus on the annual contributions by plan. Key takeaway here really is, these are your two closed plans. These are the plans where most members are retiring from. Key takeaway here is that the Tier One Plan will have more retirements coming out of it by 2029 than the Legacy Plan. That's significant, because as you recall, your plans get less expensive for you as they get newer, so the Tier One Plan is newer than Legacy Plan, your costs of running a pension plan should go down. So how much are we paying our retirees? Let's look at that now. This is what you're paying your retirees as a percent of payroll. You have, over the last 10 years, seen a decline of 5% from, since 2010 in your retirement benefits as a percent of payroll. That's two different, two different reasons why. The main reason is because, as I said earlier, you have members retiring from newer plans, less expensive plans, so you're not paying as much now in retirement benefit payments. And also, your payroll has increased, because maybe salary increases or what have you, and so on a proportional level, you're not paying as much versus in your past years. So how much does the average retiree really make? We're gonna just focus on the Legacy Retiree for a second. This is the profile for your retirees that, in the Legacy Plan, remember, there was, it's the oldest plan, but there's still some members that are working. We'll look at those in the slides that come. These are 60-year-olds, 24 years of service. They're receiving $20,000 a year from ERFC. If you add in the VRS benefit, they're making $48,000 a year. That brings them to a final average salary of 54%. 2001 Tier One Plan, not as meaningful, it's a very new plan, but this is that sliver of the population that I mentioned earlier in the Tier One Plan that's retired. If you really do the math here, these, they retired with 64 years of old on average, 12 years of service. These are members that came in, or employees that came to work for FCPS in their early 50s. So it's no surprise that they're starting to retire now. Obviously, they're not receiving as much, 25% of their final average salary, and this is before Social Security, so keep that in mind. Key takeaway for this slide is that your FCPS employees are not by any means retiring with lavish benefits. So how does this compare to Fairfax County? Some of you might be aware that Fairfax County is looking at potential changes for their plans. This is the latest information that I have available to me. Fairfax County Plan on the left-hand side there versus ERFC Tier One and the Hybrid Plan. This first column here, this first row here is showing that the Fairfax County Plan is really able to retire at an earlier age, at age 60, versus ERFC members are gonna have to wait for Social Security age with five years of service. If you look at the retirement eligibility and the salary averaging, basically the same for both plans, and so there would be a rule of 90 in five years average, final average salary for both plans. And then looking at the total employee contributions, this is how much the members are paying into their pension plans. You're looking at 5.3% for Fairfax County versus ERFC, 8% to 12%, depending on how they choose to take advantage of the Hybrid Plan. The multiplier is at 2% for Fairfax County. That's what they're looking at raising it to versus the ERFC at 1.8. I think if you were to summarize this slide, the summary here is, the picture that this is painting is that Fairfax County employees will be able to retire at an earlier age, they'll pay less into their retirement, and they'll receive more at retirement than an ERFC employee or a FCPS employee. That's what, if you take the key terms for this, for this slide. So what about current employees? We're just gonna blaze through this one. This is, just gives you a picture of your current employees by, from the Legacy Plan all the way to the Tier Two Plan. Just interestingly enough, that Legacy Population on the left-hand side, these are 54-year-olds with 21 years of service, that's that population I mentioned earlier that's still working in the Legacy Plan, but as you can see, they're probably getting really close to retirement, and they're not, I imagine they're starting to think about that very seriously right now. Move on to our portfolio. So for starters, let's talk about what our allocation looks like. We have about 39%, 39.5% in stocks. 15% of our portfolio is in global asset allocation. These are managers that can invest in stocks, bonds internationally or domestically. They have a lot of latitude. Finally, we have 29% of our portfolio allocated to bonds, and the remaining 16.5% in alternative asset classes. But for the exciting part, and in this next section, for the remaining part of this next section, you're gonna see that we're, as of June 30th, 2017, that's because it's the latest comparable information that we can get our hands on. So we want to make sure that you give, we give you peer comparisons. Not all peers release their data, their financial statements exactly at June 30th, so this is the latest available information available to ERFC. So performance, on that year-end basis, we were at 12.1% after fees. We ranked in the 64 percentile. That just really means that we did better than 36% of our peers. On a 15-year basis, 7.2% after fees, we ranked in the 32 percentile, and now all that means is that we did better than 68% of our peers, so that's a big windfall for us. So how do we compare versus the larger plans? And I'll just go over this really briefly. You might be familiar with CalSTRS, second-largest pension plan in the world, but it's the largest teacher's pension plan in the nation. I said world, I meant nation, I'm sorry. 13.4% after fees, 209 billion in assets under management, that's what the AUM stands for, and 1,700 staff, 64% funded. Similarly, 12.1% for ERFC, 75.2% funded. VRS, 78 billion in assets under management, 72% funded, same performance as ERFC. And then finally, CalPERS. CalPERS is the largest pension plan in the nation. A lot more resources than ERFC. They were at 326 billion in assets under management, and they were only 68.3% funded as of that timeframe. What about our local funds? This is a comparison versus the Fairfax County Plans. The highest-performing plan that they have after fees was 10.9%. If you take the weighted average, that puts them at 8.3%. So how does this really impact your funding? Let's move on to the next slide. This really shows your mortgage for ERFC, and as you can see, this has been gradually increasing. However, your funded ratio has remained very, very stable over time, floating between 75 and 77%. That's sort of the key metric for you as a plan sponsor. Why? Because it determines how much you contribute into our system, and makes things more predictable for you, and it really makes the math easier. But I think we need to take a moment to talk about what this funded ratio really means. What does 75% funded mean? It's one of the most widely misunderstood points in the industry. A lot of people have the tendency to take 75, subtract it from 100, and say, "Well, you're not gonna be able to pay 25% of your benefits." That's just not the case. But let's, in the next slide, I'll show you a scenario, a few scenarios that I think will help drive this home. Under the normal scenario, if we continue to make, being our assumptions as we have over the last 45 years, we'd be able to continue making our benefit payments and meeting our obligations in perpetuity. If you're pessimistic, and you think that, you know, we might not make any returns in this scenario, without making any returns for the indefinite future, but you continue to make your contribution payments into the system as you have over the last 45 years, we can still meet our obligations for 25 years. And then, an even more pessimistic scenario, we'll call it the doomsday scenario, we don't make any money on our investments, you don't make any contributions to the plan, we can still meet our obligations for the next nine years. So the ERFC plan at 75% funded is very healthy, and I would just underscore that I would never recommend that either of the scenarios come to fruition. I wouldn't say that would be highly irresponsible, which gives you an idea of the health. So what is the impact on the contributions? I'm just gonna go quickly through this. The contributions have stayed fairly level over the years, as was a spike in 2013. That's because this School Board decided to give the employees a discount on their contribution rate in lieu of giving them salary increases. So let's talk about one we're gonna be fully funded. Our funded, is, our funding is actually gonna reach 100% funding sooner rather than later, just because you have less expensive plans who are retiring at a rapid, at a faster pace now. And so eventually, your cost should sort of gravitate towards your Tier 2001 Tier Two costs, which is much lower than your Legacy Plan costs. What about your funded status? I think obviously we expect that to reach 100%, and by 2040, we expect you to be 100% funded. And so let's look at the costs really quickly, because I realize we're running out of time here. In this slide, you see total investment costs for ERFC versus Fairfax County and VRS. This isn't basis points. Just really quickly, if you're not familiar with basis points, all it is, you take your total costs, divide it by your total assets, that gives you a really small decimal point. It's not pretty to look at. We'd rather see things in basis points. That's all it is. So on a basis, the average basis point cost to run, administer, and invest in a pension plan, within this peer group is 84.2 basis points. As you can see, ERFC is lower than that. So what drives investment expenses? Just taking simple linear regression, just try to figure out a plan of our size, how much a plan of our size would pay for investment expenses? We expect that a plan of our size would be paying $13.2 million in annual investment expenses. We're at 13.5 million, so we're right in that ballpark. Some of the key drivers, in case you're not familiar of investment expenses, include the scale. You saw on the previous slide, VRS was fairly low in terms of costs. That's because they have over $70 billion in assets to work with, and at that point, you sort of reach economies of scale. You're able to negotiate much lower fees with money managers, you're able to reach breakpoints, et cetera, and so on and so forth. Also, the allocation. Are you invested in more expensive assets versus less expensive assets? Everybody's different, and there's not a single pension plan that does things exactly the same. Also, the internal versus external management? Do you have a plan like, again, VRS, just to keep on that trend, pick on VRS for a little bit? As a point of reference, they invest 30% of their money, upwards of 30% of their money in internally. So that's a big fee savings, but that also means that they have a large staff, and we saw that in one of the prior slides. And then lastly, is it, are their assets managed versus unmanaged? Let's look at really quickly administrative costs. Administrative costs really for Fairfax County, VRS, and ERFC, this is the combined Fairfax County Plans, and then we take the total members, obviously 32,000 for Fairfax County, 38,000 for ERFC, and you take the administrative cost divided by total members, that gives you a total cost per member per year. What you can sort of glean from this is, obviously, both Fairfax County and ERFC are much less expensive than VRS. ERFC in particular, saving $155 per member compared to VRS. Key difference here that I think is important to sort of highlight is that ERFC is not only servicing ERFC members, some of you might, may or may not be aware of this, but VRS doesn't have representation here in Fairfax County, despite the fact that we remain one of their largest employers contributing to their plan. So our members really lean on ERFC for customer service around VRS benefits. So that takes time, and time, as you know, is money, and so that's why you see that difference between Fairfax County and ERFC. That would be the main difference. Now let's talk about our strategic priorities for the next three years, and I'll go through this very, very quick, because I've expended my time. Sustainability, obviously, we have a large focus on that. Marketing, we want to help, we want to join hands with Dr. Braybrand and his leadership team. We want to make sure that we increase our ability to recruit and retain high-quality FCPS employees as you have in the past, and we want to focus on a clear message and continue educating our key stakeholders. We're gonna skip this slide, it's just more on the marketing plan. I'll touch base really quickly on our ambassador program, you might be aware of that. All it is, is a volunteer-based program. We have volunteers at FCPS locations who really just distribute ERFC information, they guide ERFC to, they guide those employees to ERFC resources. Plan started in 2014, 2016, excuse me, with 14 members, has gone up to 89 members as of today. We're shooting for 250 ambassadors as of the end of 2019, or one ambassador every school location. So just to recap, the 2001 Tier Two Plan is the only plan that's open and growing. We've performed very well. The fund has remained stable in terms of the funded ratio, costs remain relatively low compared to our peers, and we have a strong focus on marketing sustainability. With that, I'll turn it over to questions. I apologize, it went over about three minutes, but, so.
You did a great job. Thank you. I have two board members on my list, starting with Ms. Perchek, to be followed by Mrs. McLaughlin.
Thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say how impressed I was with the presentation. I remember looking through it and saying both how visually organized, the data, the information, great amount of education for us as board members. I just wanna, want to commend you, your first presentation to the Board. It really, truly was what everything I think I look for as a board member, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a few questions, and I know some of these are probably have questions that were brought up last year when we started to really try to delve a little bit more deeply into the ERFC and our funding. I guess, and a lot of it has to do with our investments, and I think several of us spent quite a bit of time trying to look at how we do that and how that compares to others. So I think in order to better understand the information, just in our own fund, and I appreciate that there's so much comparison with Fairfax County, with Virginia, I think my questions are more sort of beyond those comparisons. When we do compare ourselves, and you have California, when we do compare ourselves to outside investment funds or other arenas, I guess one of the areas of criticism I had heard from members of the community was that we were comparing ourselves to other publicly-managed funds that maybe had similar, you know, downfalls or challenges to ours. So I guess with your experience and background, and getting a little bit better understanding of when we're comparing the way our fund is managed and the way it performs, what are we compared to in those ratings, in those defined benefit ratings?
Yeah, that's a great question. Just to make sure I'm gonna get the right, answer the right question, you want to know what the best peer group is to compare ourselves to?
Well, I guess first, which one are we comparing ourselves to? I guess it says universe of 60 defined benefit pension programs.
Yeah, so typically, a plan of our size has very different dynamics than a plan of VRS's size, and just to answer your question directly, we would compare ourselves to the 1 to $5 billion range funds. This group of 60 is basically as many of those funds that we could get our hands on. There's not very many, there's a lot of pension plans, there's over, there's over 2,000 pension plans in the nation, but they're all different sizes, and once you hit, really, $3 billion in assets, your dynamics really start to change. You start to hire staff internally, potentially, after $5 billion, you even hire more staff internally. It just, the dynamics really change.
Okay, and I guess if there's, if it's possible to get, so those 60, that's something you, ERFC, you compiled, or that's something that is used more widely?
So that was given to us by our general investment consultant, so they have a database that compiles this information. We don't have access to that yet, but it is given to us by the experts.
Okay, if it's possible to have more information as to what those 60 are, I don't, that would be helpful.
Okay, so just to be clear, you want the names of those funds, is that we?
So I don't, yeah, if it's possible, yes. That would be, that would be really helpful, just to get a better sense of who are we comparing ourselves to.
Sure.
Who that is, because, I mean, this is very, right, impressive, in that we've increased so much this year as well. I know we had quite a few conversations last year about passive, well, I guess now it's called active versus non-active, but active versus passive, and I guess I wanted to get a little bit more of a sense from you as to, as to your thoughts. It's interesting to hear that, you know, Tier Two, and I agree with you, we are now, it may cost us less, but employees are getting less, and they will be getting less when they retire, most, their, my age is the average, so when people my age retire, they're going to be seeing much lower benefits than those before them. So I just wanted to, I appreciate that you shared that balanced perspective on it, but then also, I guess, we never, I feel like we never really finalized the conversation here of the diversified portfolio being very helpful, but there being this conversation out in the investment community of, is it really worthwhile, when very often, you're not getting a better return than you would be with more passive management?
Yeah, that's a fair question, and just, again, to underscore that I'm gonna answer the right question, your question is around, is passive versus active, which one's better?
Well, I guess for, if you can answer that, or for us, if you continue to recommend that we continue to have the type of management and portfolio that we have.
Yeah, so we're gonna look at, you know, you saw our focus, strategic initiatives, one of them was sustainability, under sustainability is fees. We're gonna look at those fees very, very closely. My goal is to reduce those fees, and without harming our risk-adjusted returns, because I think we're on the same page here. You as a board for, and a plan sponsor, I think the last thing you want to do is increase your bill to us, what we invoice you for. I think the end result has to be that you pay less money, and that's our goal as well. So sometimes, when you sort of cut the fees too much, the end result is that you end up paying more money. I want to avoid that. I want to make sure that we cut it enough so that you don't see an increase, but you see a cost saving. So we're gonna look at that very seriously. There is some wisdom in looking at active versus passive, so we're gonna look at that very, very closely. You're gonna see that, that's not off the table.
Thank you. And last final question, are the expenses of our 30-person staff included in the base points?
Yes, so that, the basis point, that was all investment costs, all administrative costs, the all-in costs for administering a pension plan.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to provide feedback to my colleagues, Chair and Vice Chair. I know we always wrestle with, how do we build our work sessions, but I'm concerned that we only gave this 30 minutes, and I think, given the importance of this fund, and the questions that I would hope all of our board members would be asking about this, I would just make a request that people either weigh in, that they think 30 minutes was sufficient, or do we maybe want to consider, before we wait another whole year, to have a dialogue on this, that we might have a mid-year conversation, because this is an important topic.
So Ms. McLaughlin, we started the presentation with, this is really just kind of an appetizer. It was a way of introducing the new ERFC. It was a way of introducing the new ERFC team and providing an update. This was not supposed to be a full-fledged discussion of ERFC, which we had multiple of those last year and the year before. It was really, we have a new team in place, and we wanted to provide that opportunity.
Well, I appreciate that. But regardless, I know from last year that the public especially raised a lot of questions for the board members to consider. And as the gentleman noted, we are the sponsoring body of this investment plan. So again, I'm just stating this one board member's concern that regardless of this was just a sort of, hey, want to introduce the new team, and here's what we're doing. The bottom line is this presentation is extremely substantive. It does bring things into question. So I'm just saying for another day.
Appreciate the feedback, but if we can.
So we'll, I hope I'm not the only one giving feedback. While I will echo what Ms. Palczek said, this is a very heavily detailed presentation, and that is appreciated. I feel like there's a lot to be learned from it. But as the daughter of a career public school teacher, I will say that I found some of the language and the way in which this was framed as a public message highly troubling. This board could not be bigger champions of our employees in the public schools, and especially our teachers. And yet, the way that the data is presented in context, I think it paints a very negative picture. In particular, when we're talking about, and I'll try to find the slide so I can be, help you understand where my consternation is. Slides 11 and slides 13, when you're giving the active retiree profile and the active member profile, you know, especially for a system that is heavily weighted toward teachers. And many of our teachers do begin their careers here at age 22. These examples all had people at about ages 33 to 38. It had them with 24 years of service when even under the legacy plan, if you started here at 22 and did 30 years of service, you're retiring at 52. So these numbers of showing what these people's annual retirement will be, I mean, it would be alarming for a teacher to look at that number and see that's what our colleagues are retiring at on average. So I just, I don't feel like this gave, number one, an accurate depiction. That should give reassurance to many people who enter the teaching profession to see some of these numbers, especially when you went to the Tier 1 examples. Your Tier 1 example on slide 11, if we could please bring that up. I mean, you're saying that, you know, the average age, 64 years old, 12 years of service, that's a 52-year-old who came into the system that is clearly someone in a second career. And so that a second career individual can come in in between the ERFC and the VRS, have $25,000 retirement, but that's not their sole primary retirement. That's a second career retirement. But it's just, to me, those numbers, if you're not staring at them hard enough, it would be alarming for people going into the teaching profession to not start peeling away the onion of understanding it. So I think your examples, I don't understand, but we don't have time to talk about them. So I'm just raising them for you. The other thing is, you began the presentation saying things like, because of the changes the Fairfax County School Board has made, your plan is now less expensive, less generous, with less payout. That is not at all where this board was coming from. We were focused on fiscal sustainability, fiscal responsibility, and looking at the market landscape. Because we have no choice with limited revenue to look at how do you operate a public school system with reductions in dollars to have a retirement plan that matches those positives. And so I sat here in the first few minutes as you presented, and all I could think to myself is, if I were employed at this school system, I would be even more upset with this school board and thinking that it was all about money grubbing. So I hope I'm not the only voice at the table today. But I would just respectfully ask to reflect on how this got presented today and the message that it was sending. And to our employees who are in the audience, I will just tell you that I hope we do a better job at being able to communicate out our commitment and our dedication to our employees, and that none of this was driven about bottom dollar. It was about how do we ensure a very robust and valuable benefit to all of our employees, teachers and every single employee sitting in this building, sitting in this room and the 40,000 who work for us.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. And thank you for the presentation. So glad I followed Megan, because I do have to echo her sentiments. I think, you know, when making presentations, you have to know your audience. And the audience is not just the board members here. It is the whole community. So I do have, I do have concerns with how this was presented with, to us today. I had substantive questions, but I'll leave it at that.
Any other board member? Okay. Corbin Sanders?
Maybe because I had thought of this as being an introduction to the new team and where you're at in this. I actually look at this presentation. And maybe there are semantics issues of how things were presented because they weren't necessarily, you didn't necessarily know the historical context of when we made modifications to the plan last year and why we made those modifications based on input from the previous superintendent that this was necessary for sustainability of the plan. Having said that, I want to commend you. I want to commend you on the thorough presentation that you have put before this board today. And want to welcome you back at another time for a deeper dive on, so that we can ensure that people around this table understand, not only about the work you're doing, but kind of the strategy and best practices that government employee benefit plans are all about. Because your return on investment last year compared, I believe, compared to many other across the country was higher. From what I saw, there were some press releases over the weekend from different plans. And the fact that you've come to us with a very detailed kind of explanation of how the plan can be benchmarked against other plans, I think is very helpful. And when we make future decisions about things, this would be a template that I would suggest we all need to have around the table of having more information and more comparisons to others. So thank you.
Mrs. Sanders?
So I guess I'm a little bit more in the camp of Mr. McAlveen and Ms. McLaughlin. It's more than a know your audience. It's a know the history. And this board was compelled to contribute at a state level in order to remain solvent at a state level and a higher demand of funding at the state level. And choices had to be made. And we do have a resource stewardship problem. This is an issue that has taken down entire states. States have gone bankrupt. Cities have gone bankrupt over retirement systems. So I guess I share the frustration that this has given so little time, given the financial obligation and the entanglement of what's been presented at the county level versus here. I do think the board needs to a lot more time for a discussion of this magnitude. But I do think that the way in which information is presented needs to be forthcoming in the understanding that we are messaging as a system and actually at sort of an economic development authority level of drawing organizations and premier workforce employees here. And I would caution that this may not have been the best way to do it.
Any other board member? You have any responses to the comments made by board members?
Sure. I would say I would, I appreciate all the comments that you made. We'll take it to heart. We'll look at it on a go-forward basis and make sure that we incorporate those changes, become more sensitive, et cetera, into our future presentations to this board. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Sure, there, we'll go to next step. I think there was one request on this from Ms. Palczek.
It sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that we would like a follow-up. I guess, I believe, the second one. As a board, I also want us to be clear about what we're looking for in that follow-up. Because keep in mind, there is a separate board. So I guess I just want us to be a little bit clear.
Ms. Palczek, I 100% agree with you because some people were expressing concerns, but then not talking about specificity of what they would like. So if any board member would like a go-back to talk specifically to help this group understand better what would be more, what would better serve this board's needs, I would, Mr. Moon, I would, I would like you to take that opportunity to do that.
Okay.
If anyone is so, wants to.
Okay. Upon, I cannot overrule Ms. Tammy Kofak. So any, any board member? Okay. Thank you.
Just in reference to the concerns I raised, I would like to have slides 11 and 13, which I think are exceptionally relevant to school board members to better understand those examples on a legacy retiree that we're going to see more information about what it's like for our employees who do come into our system at age 22 and do give 30 years of service in all of the plans, legacy Tier 1 and Tier 2. Because the examples were people who were coming in very late in their career. So I would want that information in a follow-up. And I think those were kind of the key pieces that, to date, that I can think of that we need in terms of actual data. But I do want to echo that for next step, I do want to see that we have a future opportunity to meet with all of you. Because yes, ERFC might have a board, but we vote to put people on that board. And in the end, we are the sponsoring body of this portfolio. So how this portfolio performs, including the board members that sit on it, we're still the oversight to make sure that we're as successful as possible. And I certainly appreciate the dedication you communicated today, that that is your goal, to be as successful as possible. And that's probably the most important thing.
Anybody else?
Just to clarify, because this is actually a question I meant to ask. For Tier 2, especially Tier 1 as well, you will have to make certain assumptions. Because Tier 2, these are brand-new employees, right, in Tier 1. So I guess I don't know if you need more guidance from us or if you're able to make those assumptions based on current and projected future earnings?
Right. So you're spot-on on that. Obviously, we don't have, as you saw in one of the earlier slides, we don't have any retirees in the Tier 2 plan. Very new plan. You just opened that plan last year. You're not going to have any retirees, hopefully for a very long time. So we can put in assumptions, that's all they're going to be. And we're going to do that in, probably in concert with our actuary, because that's beyond my math skills.
Okay. Okay, one last one, and then we'll do the next steps, all right?
No, I just want to add a third next step, which is schedule a future board meeting to take a deeper dive into the ERFC. I think that's what we were talking about, correct?
Thank you. You know, we can only extend our invitations. Okay, so we'll start from the top. Does that capture your wording? Second one, does that capture your wording, Ms. McLaughlin? Then say it.
I, younger ages concerns me. Because if I were them, I'd be like, okay, what is a younger age? What I'm saying is people entering the system early in their careers, 22 to 25 years of age. I mean, that's typically when we get brand-new teachers.
Okay, let's, let's work on the wordings.